Welcome everyone to our September meeting. We didn't get to meet, we know the pleasure of being in August, but if you'd like to call this meeting for August. And we can start off with approval, so we have two packets of minutes to approve June and July. That was sent out to you. The motion approved minutes? I guess we can approve both at the same time. We have a motion and a second to approve June and July's minutes. Any comments? Corrections? I had one correction, Summer, that I sent ahead of time, but I think you've gotten. Uh, my last name. Do you want to have anything else? Like, the vote on June and July's, approval of June and July's minutes? All in favor? Any against? Motion carries. Um, next, we have a special guest to introduce. Uh, we have Sarah French here, who is the new hire, and I'll let Manny introduce her, but we want to say welcome to you and um, it's great to see you here and you're smiling. I just told Manny you seem really excited to be here and your smile is contagious.
Thank you.
Um, I've already heard from many staff already how excited to have you back. So Manny, if you don't mind, share a little bit about Sarah.
Yeah, so we had a committee that consisted of Summer, Angenee, and myself. We interviewed some extremely qualified candidates. But at the end of the day, Sarah was our top choice. Uh, the enthusiasm that she brought to the interview, the way that she held herself, very professional during the interview, just really impressed a heck of us. Uh, us all together and um, we're so excited for uh, Sarah to come and what she's gonna bring to the table. Um, Adult Services had Kathleen had been there for many years and did a fantastic job. Having Sarah come onboard, she's gonna have new ideas and new vision for the department. And I know the staff there is so excited. I spoke with Melinda today. And she is so happy and I spoke with Brennan yesterday and she's excited. So um, just get ready on Monday, you're gonna see a lot of smiley faces and like, and just people's just so excited to have you start and run the department. So um, welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm very, very excited to be back.
Welcome, Sarah. This is a wonderful library to join and we're excited to work with you. Um, let's see, I don't think we have any um, public comment listed. Um, so let's move on to uh, we're here. Thank you all for coming early to the long-range plan. Um, I was actually just reviewing notes um, from Danny, Stephanie, and I meeting in August and of our timeline and pulling that all together. You know, I would also welcome, we didn't say, if there's anything that you have, you're really passionate about or want to see in the plan, uh, I think bring it forward to you as well. Um, but our purpose, our commitment is to get something to the foundation right into the year. Um, I want to thank staff, uh, and Manny and team for the wonderful summer that you guys did. I was in here a lot with myself, with my kids and it's just so impressive what you guys ran, amount of programming that staff put into it, um, the heat, um, and just the number of visitors. I'd be really interested like how many folks came out of the library. It's just, it was impressive. So please share that with the staff. Uh, we have the trustee workshop that I'm sure Liz will touch um, on a little bit, but around the corner on, at Art Circle on September 25th. She's placed it in front and I'll let her share more. One thing I wanted to offer is that I will be driving there if anyone wants to carpool um, with me, just let me know. Um, I have a large mom van now, not a van, SUV. And so that, looking forward to, um, prior to that, David, um, man, Jory?
Ben, Ben Jamori.
Ben Jamori, Ben Jamori, I haven't looked at his last, uh, coming on September 5th. So that community forum is taking place at 6:30. We've, um, if you guys please extend the invitation again to the Friends, the Foundation to be there. And um, I know that staff will do a good job promoting that to the community. They always do with the PR. And then I'll let Manny cover some of the cool events that are coming up in September. Uh, with some, you know, neat things uh, that we've talked about. One thing I want to put in your mind coming up is Staff Development Day is November 22nd. And traditionally, the board has provided breakfast for folks. So if that's something that you're interested in, I'll reach, I'll reach you back out. Um, in October, go through to it, but if there's something like that you're really good and passionate about or want to provide or if it may be, we can take care of that too. I think you were looking in to see if it would be easier for us to just give cash and send you one order. So if you'll find getting back to you. And that's it. My report.
So um, first I want to thank Stephanie um, for the slushy truck. That was a huge hit and it, as the phrase goes, that's what the doctor ordered because it was a warm day. And we were all out there enjoying our, our slushies there. So thank you so much for that, Steph. Really appreciated that. Um, it's the little things like that that really go a long way. So thank, thank you. Um, as Lauren said, it was, it was a busy, busy summer. When it came to programming adult and children. I'm not gonna go into everything that children's had, but we had Touch a Truck, we had, if you remember back when, we had Mini-Con um, at the start of the summer reading program. They had various challenges. There were team programs going on. Uh, one was trying uh, food from different countries. That was very interesting. Uh, that was a lot of fun. And um, so right now, children's is kind of catching its breath. It's kind of calming down because starting in October, the programming kicks up again because we have Fall Festival. So that'll be coming up and then right around the corner, I hate to bring it up, we're in the holidays. So we're definitely having Santa come back. We've already received confirmation. And I know the children's department in Manhattan will do New Year's Eve again. Looking forward to all their neat and cool programs that they will have and the teams will have. Uh, over at Reference, we already introduced Sarah and we're just so excited for her to begin. And um, one of the programs that we had during the summer, it was the day before the book sale. This was a collaboration with Friends. We had the release of Vietnam Voices Number Four. Um, and it was in honor of Billy Minzer. Uh, Mayor Mitchell was able to come and speak and um, with a proclamation for Billy. Um, and it was great. We also had our writer in resident, Sherry McConner. She was the, kind of like the MC and the host of the, of the program. Uh, couldn't pick a better day. It was the same day during a UT baseball game. So everyone had their hats on while the game was going on, but um, we were done before the game finished. And you know how the World Series went with the UT, so that, that was good. Um, over in collections, Kathy Totten just has some pretty fascinating statistics when it comes to the children's area. Um, as far as checkouts. Just working on that. Cafe had its um, bi-annual inspection and scored a 99, uh, which is fantastic. Uh, very excited about that. And actually in the, in the notes as well, sales increased by a thousand dollars uh, during June and July compared to May. Well, a lot of people spilled, if you were here during the summer, it was just kind of crazy. And like I said, children's home is just trying to catch their breath. Uh, because it was just, that place was just nuts. It really was with kids running around and we could hear it in the background. So it was, I can't imagine what was going on in the, in the frontline there in children's. Um, we had some really neat uh, summer reading displays. We had the uh, in um, collaboration with the summer reading program this year, Adventure at Your Library. We had the cool um, audio balloon. Um, and that's Penny Stewart that comes up with that and Lacy Lyons as well. Uh, just some terrific.
They do a great job.
They, they are amazing. So wait till you see September because it will be um, in relation to the upcoming Taylor Swift Silent Disco. Uh, so they got some pretty cool um, dance-themed uh, display coming. Uh, one thing that I do want to point out and Rebecca has the June and July. You can see the number of uh, library carts. Uh, we thought June was pretty amazing at 517, but then if you look at July, 731 new library. So that was something to look at. One thing I, I neglected to point out in Adult Services, some upcoming programs. We have the storytelling um, event coming up in September. We also have what used to be known as Local Voices. It will now be the Annabelle Spent Literary Festival Literary Fair in memory of the first librarian here in Blood, Blood County Public Library. So that's really, really neat. Um, we have other programs uh, that are gonna be planned. Before I get to my update, I just wanted to just throw this out to you at the board. Um, you know, we would put the calendar in there. Would you be okay if we just add the newsletter that has for three months, the information in there? And that's all the PR. That's Angenee, that's Beth, that's Zoe, that's Summer. They do such an awesome job to make this look so clean. So, okay, that, that works. Um, under uh, the admin update, Tackle, the Tennessee Advisory Council on Libraries, they have now postponed their meeting from on September 26th and 27th.
That's the week of September, our trustee workshop. Oh, it's trustee workshop, roadshow week. So yeah, I think that, that they looked at it and went, whoa, that's gonna be a bit, that might be a bit much. Um, and so, yeah, I told Manny, um, I got confirmation that they're, I think they're gonna try for maybe a virtual meeting or something this time around and then maybe try to circle back around to our region in the future for an in-person meeting.
So Taco will still take place on the 26th and 27th, but virtually?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
They're gonna try to schedule it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, we'll let everybody know when that happens, but yes, that's, yes. Yes. For right now, not, as far as I know, it's not happening on September that week. That's all super trustee workshop week. Yeah.
Um, introduced, uh, introduced Sarah already, so excited for her to start. Then the last thing is about the book return and kind of giving, giving a timeline on what's going on. Um, it is going in front of the Budget Committee in September. It'll be voted on by the Budget Committee in September and will be in front of the Commission in September. Once the Commission approves, we can have our first pre-construction meeting. So we're looking at late September for that.
And the, the company, for their contract, has six weeks to mobilize. So it could be, you know, October, November, um, depending on mobilization, how quickly they can get there.
What kind of contingencies is there for the weather? Because we're, we're getting a winter by that now.
Yeah, we talked about that. Actually, Angenee and I were talking about the winter because they're gonna have to do some exterior work as well. So we don't know if they'll be okay for November or they might just say March, spring.
They do, they do standard AI contractors, like which built-in for them to get so many days installed. We've had mild winters, bad roads, it's just.
They're not doing excavation work, they're not doing a ton of site work.
No, it's just that the road gets re-grated, so it's not, should, shouldn't be too.
Well, we thank the Commission, uh, the support and, and the staff that's been helping us go through the, the process, the purchasing process for sure.
Um, on the finance portion, um, just want to briefly say if, if there are any questions of our budget or the upcoming vision, uh, upcoming fiscal year, uh, this year. Um, please reach out to us at the director email um, ahead of time so we can answer your questions um, at the next trustee meeting. So we can, we can serve you at email. Okay, I don't know who wants to speak about that.
Yeah, Angenee, will you quickly run over the budget, uh, what's shaping?
Sure. Um, so uh, what I have shared with you is what the numbers were as of late July 24th in terms of last fiscal year. Um, you might notice, so if you're looking in the board packet, it's the first one and it says from July 1st to June 30th of 2024. Um, and that's got 52 weeks. You'll notice that it shows a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars remaining in salary and benefits. That line will actually settle down and we'll know what's real come October. But we are like, so this week, that was reduced again, an additional thirty thousand dollars. It's just, they've, they've cut off the, the time limit and now they're just resettling accounts. Everything has been paid for last fiscal year, but now they've gotta um, go back and make adjustments. So you're gonna see fluctuation in that. Um, what is it? Uh, the library did an amazing job with its library-generated revenues. Um, that thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, that's probably, that might go up again. Um, what is it? Uh, so I will be keeping uh, you updated on that. The important thing is that three hundred thousand dollar number that you're seeing is including the foundation's funds in that. So um, while we did hit our projection, um, it's not three, we couldn't do three hundred and ten thousand again. That's got the, I think eighty-one thousand that we started with, um, foundation's funds for different projects included in that. Any questions on last fiscal year?
Anything over goes into fund balances, right?
Absolutely. Fund balance is only to be used for one-off instances in capital projects. So when we have uh, the roof, that's where it comes in. When we get to the point where we're doing something with our floors, re-carpet or otherwise, that's where that's gonna come in. Unfortunately, it can't be used on anything else. Um, and actually I do have it in here. Um, to date, the county is saying that the library-generated revenues were two hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. And that is without the foundation's funds, so. Um, what is it? We did very well um, in our spending down of our operations and our personnel or our operations definitely, uh, last fiscal year. We will see again where personnel settles. Um, any funds not spent in personnel means that the position was vacant. That's why. Because it is, um, I'd say, figure to a T. Um, moving on to this fiscal year. Um, there was, so um, what is it? In moving around, uh, what is it? I gave you a new um, revenue sheet. Uh, the one that's included in the packet, um, had some columns cut from it. And um, that also, and, and this is, I'll tell you what, you guys asking questions about the budget is helpful because when I'm in a vacuum, it makes perfect sense to me. And I read it over and I read it over and I read it over. Um, so in, I'd like to make corrections on the actual narrative report. Where it says eight percent, it actually needs to be nine point six two because eight percent is if you're in a four-week month, but we were having a five-week month. So it increases, I'm sure that percentage doesn't matter much to you, but it does to me. So I want to make sure that, so if you'll just know where it says, everywhere where it says eight percent, if you'll add nine point six two, we're still um, tracking very well. Um, what is it? And the main thing to, to recognize is when you're looking at operations, you'll notice that our communication line is at forty-three percent. And that is because in July, we were notified by the finance team that our funds would be handled much like our internet is and taken out at an annual rate versus a monthly rate. So that's what you're seeing there. I think that's pretty much it. Outside of saying that we have a conversation um, planned tomorrow to uh, further explore and, and tighten up and improve communications between the finance department and our department. And we're looking forward to it. That's it. Any other questions?
Angenee, thank you for doing such a good job as a budget. It's even has a good shape. You're a pretty good, uh, a lot of hard work and big budgets and a lot of people. So thank you, appreciate it. Manny, thanks for your, your update as well. Okay, moving on, um, still always looking to have an update on the foundation.
Nice. One of the things that we're working on in that formulation is um, is our website. Trying to get that, it's just current, it has board members on it still. That it's current and if you notice in the newsletter, the Communications, Friends and Communications person for the library, um, allowed us a corner in there. So we have a little announcement and we're directing people to our website. So I want to make sure that, that it's up to date. And the other thing we're doing is trying to get our members, um, some additional training. So as the year continues, we can try to give them some fundraising training. Um, we also would like to expand that word a little. I think we've had five members for, I think, a few years. You know, as we move over the next couple of years, we're very looking to, we'll want to make sure we have a few more members. And we've, uh, our, our, I think we sold six tables for the Friends anniversary party so far. Try to sell 10, sorry, quote.
And now, at the last, the foundation meeting, was that last week? Um, there is a request to the board on, uh, we're being the keeper of the login and username of the foundation website because that is now sitting with the city of Maryville. We've waited for a while to get that information back. And so the ask is, could the PR team or someone on staff just keep the username and login? Not manage the websites, just the login information? Um, as board transitions, as staff transitions, that it's kept here and there else?
Okay.
So once we receive it from Jane Groff, uh, yeah, we'll have it catalogued. Thank you for the foundation and thanks uh, for selling the tables and um, if, was there anything that you guys were looking forward to from the Friends that were needed to close out the?
Flyer I created.
And voice, that's okay, yeah. Okay. Well, unfortunately, we don't have Vandy here for her first, uh, where we do, we have Dee. If you'd like to have an update for the Friends.
The paint performance.
Yeah. We're happy to have you.
We had a wonderful teachers event with, on and, and about eighty other teachers. We, um, not just the private sale that they had, but the preschool supplies we gave out. Food, drinks, um, we got a Kroger to donate capsules. We had flowers from Culters Flowers. Uh, we had a cup that was made that said, if you can read, be a teacher. So uh, it was really good. We got lots of positive feedback and we've already talked about. He was great. I mean, it, just, we felt special, you know, just because they had this cute bag. So now I have a Friends of the Library bag and I have a cup and I have all kinds of school supplies. It was really nice. Thank you, thank you. And we got some awesome books. And the uh, and the people, the volunteers felt like they were Santa Claus and it was Christmas. They were giving away everything, anything and everything. We had lots of free books as well. Calculators, we had just a ton of stuff. It was fun. Yeah, let's see, for eBay, we saw a little bit of a slowdown in July, but we sort of expected it. But we picked it up this month. I told Manny, we made almost two thousand dollars over the weekend. Really? We came in, there were seventy-seven books to ship on one day. It was really, so we're hoping that continues out the rest of the year. Um, Dick is telling me we're in crisis mode with donations. But we have gotten huge donations. I mean, they've had to go back to this one place three or four times just to pick everything up. And um, it's still, there's still some in the mailroom. We just haven't had a chance to filter it all downstairs. And the guy, or one of the guys, Donald McMinn, who's a writer, um, he donated multiple copies of his books, religious books that are worth eighty to a hundred dollars each. We have a really good pipeline. Phil mentioned the gala for October, so um, that's moving along rather quickly these days. The tickets will be printed um, this week. And um, we have well over a hundred of our hundred and eighty tables, uh, tickets sold. That includes the tables, the table from the foundation. Thank you. Um, we had a couple of people, a couple of our volunteers buy tables, a table for eight. Uh, so we have, uh, we don't think we're gonna have any problems selling the other eighty tickets. Uh, we also have donations that come in. We've already taken a lot of pictures of the donated items. So we'll have, our preview will be, we just finished the spreadsheet of all the initial pictures with the fair market value. So on our landing page, which we'll get the QR code out quickly. Um, our landing page for Clickbid will have a preview if we go through the items. So we're, we're excited about having that on route to go. The upcoming sale, so I do have, and I thank a couple of you for volunteering to be elevator operators. Um, we do still have a couple more plots. If you, somebody else would like to come in and visit the people as they come in for the sale or lead you to the sale boxes and carts and things. But we have that coming up, uh, September 5th, 6th, and 7th. And we're looking forward to another big, September is actually usually our biggest, um, say. We get more people buying Christmas books in September than December. So it'll be a big Christmas split. Um, off the record, I've been nominated to be the Friends of the Tennessee Libraries President-elect. The initial election is until October. Uh, and I wasn't started till June. They're very excited. I just tell, they're already copying me on the meeting notices and all kinds of stuff. Okay, so I'm sure I'll be in the, I'll be at the conference in October. And nobody else is running, so I don't know.
Okay, you're organizing. Okay, too, your organization's counting.
That's it.
Is there, is, and Manny, I think you can do this, is there a way that the book drop doesn't have to take all the books? But if there's a big donation, that they could actually just take it right downstairs?
Oh, they do. They put them in the bins out back.
Yeah.
So we have the two bins there, and then they call us for the donation. And Dick and several other volunteers can pick it.
But is there a way? Like, I brought thirty books, forty books. Did I, did I throw them in the, is there a way to bring them into the library and take it?
You can bring them usually.
Yeah. Yeah, or you call our phone number and arrange it. Or you can put them by the door.
Yeah.
Is your question like, if you were thinking folks go to the book drop outside currently and want to donate books there?
Yeah, is there?
We got five boxes of books that he wants to donate.
Yeah, people leave them all the time. They leave boxes right there.
They leave the boxes outside.
Yeah, as long as the weather's.
Is there a way to bring them in downstairs?
Well, you take those a couple of times a day.
They don't want visitors down there. I mean, you don't want somebody.
Yes, we don't, we don't have the general public down at that time. People leave them by the, by the elevator.
And I understand, but they're coming from the old library.
Yeah.
And I mean, not necessarily, I know my mom came um to the front door and did back her out front. Yeah, or and then told her to drive, told her to drive, where to drive.
Yeah, so we have a lot of folks who call us or contact us through the website for donations. It seems to be working because we are engaged in donations. So it's a good.
Dee, congratulations on your appointment. I'm glad you shared it. I heard about it and I think it's much deserved. And I hope that you share all the good things and plantees the rest of the state because you guys are a shiny spot for sure. When you send out the link to the um, the click, uh, the donation, the live auction, can you also include the beautiful flyer now that has all of the details? And if you don't mind saying that one more time, the date of the event at the time for October?
October twenty-fifth from six to nine. And we're partnering with Ellis City State Community College. And their culinary and hospitality program is doing all of the, all of the food and mocktails. And they're really excited. They're doing the big cake for us.
So this is at the Blount County campus, out on three twenty-one.
In France.
Summer has a table reserved, Summer have a table reserved for the board or?
Right, so the, the foundation paid for a table for the staff. That's it, just the one table, right, Summer?
Yeah, right now it was just the one. I was waiting to see who all wanted from the board to be a table. Right now I only have, I think, five people. Um, we need eight.
Stephanie, and so if you would like to attend, let Manny or Summer know. Thank you. I'm excited about the event and the, to take the action to do that. I mean, it's a wonderful thing that you guys sit there. I love the partnership with the foundation too, so thank you. All right, let's do, let's move on to, hey Liz, we're happy to have you back. Yeah, we missed you.
Yeah.
What's going on?
Good to be with you all. I'm gonna do the fun stuff first, if that's okay.
Yep.
Um, so, actually, it's all fun, but the really fun stuff. So I have, we streamlined our process with getting certificates for when our trustees complete the trust certification program. So long overdue. This is for you. Thank you so much for completing the online trust certification programs. Um, and we encourage new board members to do that as well. Um, thanks to all of you who have. Uh, that is an online program with several different modules for, that are just core modules for library trustees, covering all kinds of topics that will come up. Planning and policy development and bylaws and all the things, uh, finishing finance, reviewing finance, all those things that come before you as a trustee. So we encourage everybody to complete that if you have not. Um, we're also offering, of course, orientations. I know we'll work together to get the new board members oriented also. So also have some certificates to present for staff who completed the core competencies. So this is Kelly Jernigan and Lacey. Line?
Line, yeah.
Leon?
Leon.
Leon, yes, okay. So they get a special panel and certificate for doing that. And then we have some others for your folks that have been completing. We talk about training being a large part of what we do um and professional development being very important for a library. And so, and that's, that's a big deal for us. And so we provide trainings and you all take them. So thank you for doing that. Um, so these are building better collections and navigating overdrive marketplace. Just some sessions that we offered recently. So kudos to your staff for getting that done. Thank you. The other big thing, of course, that we're talking about is the trustee workshop Lauren mentioned. So I sent out, I emailed all twenty of our library boards the registration link. If you need assistance or it doesn't work for some reason or anything at all, just let me know. I'm happy to get you registered and people send. That, attendance at that workshop, uh, and then also completion of the trust certification program module does help the library when they apply for the technology grant. So uh, the more, the more that can do that, the better for the library. Um, some of our training opportunities that are coming up, a really big month. Um, our libraries are constantly busy all the time. There's no downtime in libraries, none at all. Um, Summer is peak, really busy, but then September kicks off, of course, um, our annual public library survey, which is something that they do for us that involves reporting all their statistics from the previous fiscal year, um, from how much they spent on ebooks, to how many people came through the door, to how many reference questions, to all of their circulation statistics, everything and anything that they did in that past fiscal year, they would work on, um, our, what we call data collection. But it's the public library survey. Uh, so that will be coming up in September. They have a whole month to complete that. Then we go through a series of edit checks and that information is really important because it actually goes on to inform folks at the federal level about the importance and the value of our public libraries and public library service. So that's a, that's a big thing coming up. Um, I have the official service area population document that you sign. I'll take you one out. We also provided you all with the Reed's circulation statistics, um, as we usually do. And then a couple of other things that I've provided to you all. Uh, again, the blue packet is all the training opportunities that we will be providing, um, both through our region and some statewide, um, that are trusted workshop, also the children's summer reading program conferences, teen library and summits, um, and then the internships that we provide as well. So we require everybody to complete training, but we've got to provide it too. So this is the act. And then the other document that I shared with you is some support rankings for Tennessee libraries by county. Um, that's this document there.
Would you, we've, we have a couple of big board members. Can we just kind of briefly talk about that support rankings?
Yes.
What that means?
Absolutely, absolutely. So our state data coordinator puts this together and we use information from the annual maintenance of effort documents. So from all the official, all the official documents about funding and library appropriations, uh, she puts this document together. And what we do is in the first, we go by, we use county as a metric, uh, or the unit of measurement. Because that's the easiest thing to do, of course. So we take all ninety-five counties and we look at census data and we look at the population in the counties and also income information from the census. And then in that very first column where you see the income rank, the counties are ranked from one to ninety-five. Um, Longview County being number one. So then we also, that final three, those final three columns, we look at all of the local funding, all of the appropriations for library services within that account. Um, so every funding body that contributes, not just the county, but also Alcoa and Maryville for, for one. Uh, and then we come up with an appropriation per capita. And then we rank the counties from one to ninety-five in terms of how much they provide for library services in each county. So ideally, what you want to see is a balance between those two rankings. Uh, yeah, so you all are, let's see, Blount County is twelfth in income and seventeenth in appropriation. So that's, that's not very far off, really. I mean, that's just a five-point difference. That's pretty good, so.
Well, I have one quick question.
Absolutely.
For certification for board members, is this something that's already set? Is it a schedule or time to be completed?
It is, well, I can register you. Uh, and then you get a link and you can access it online and it's self-paced. So the standards, I think, gives board members, new board members a year to complete all ten modules.
A year?
Yes.
It's well worth it.
But you won't need it.
A conversion.
Yeah, so each module, there's ten of them.
Okay.
Um, it has a couple of knowledge quizzes at the end. Uh, each one is roughly about a hundred minutes each, so.
It goes pretty fast.
Okay, so you just need my information, can I get that to you?
I have it. And I did, Summer got it to me already and I can register you. I can register you because I think I have all of the information on the board list. Yes, okay.
You want to throw it in the fire?
Like this, ours.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So if you have any trouble or questions or anything, just let me know, accessing and we'll help you out.
The audio is real exciting.
Yeah, wait.
The first one is a little fuzzy, but we're working on that. We're, we are working on that, so. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. And uh, for those who haven't completed the, the training, please do. Because we've lots of board members rolling off now and coming soon in our great student notice list. But also I just want to really encourage the trustee workshop. I went at the nineteenth. Um, I referred kind of a brand new board member and wow, it's impressive and a lot to learn. And it's a lot of fun, engaging, staff work as well.
They also have good food.
Good food, sometimes like a skit.
That's also a part of. No, I don't know who's done the skit. I try to liven it up with some. Getting a double entertainment.
Yeah.
Sometimes, I mean, it's fun. It's a really great day and it's a really great day to have trustees come because it's multiple regions. So you're getting to network and talk with other library board members um about all kinds of different things that come up. So it's a good opportunity for.
Thank you, Liz. And congratulations, right?
That's great. Thank you.
Um, okay, moving on to committee updates. Do we, you know, we've gone through transition now with Stephanie and I as new chair and likely probably didn't have time to meet about committees. And I think we're going to do some brainstorming internally related to focusing that shift towards the long-range plan. So some committees like change, but are there any updates? All right, moving on, let's look at, moving into old business. The internet safety plan that's in your packet. We had first review as we, at the July.
Yeah, that's very good, very good.
We have, we, um, we had first review in July and made corrections. Um, and then Summer has sent out revisions, so uh, we'd like to get a motion on the internet safety plan. I'll move. Okay, the motion in a second, we'd like to vote.
Their explanation.
Yeah, sorry, I need, I need.
Fourth paragraph, the same responsibility for damages, et cetera. What does that mean?
What page are you, okay, so go back first.
The first case.
In case you brought your own computer and connected to the network and you downloaded something and got a virus, maybe.
Yeah.
Or malware or something like that. That's, that's my interpretation.
Your own computer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's silly.
It does, yeah.
Or, or, or maybe you saw something that scared you or frightened you.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so it might be a personal kind of incorrect fright.
Any other comments? Are we ready to vote, Andy? All right, all in favor? Be opposed? Motion carries to approve the internet safety policy. Moving on to new business here, we're going to take a first look at the emergency and safety uh policy, which is also called the disaster plan. And so like entertain a vote again and I guess we need a motion to review it. Okay, then, okay.
Um. Uh, the only, there was some spacing issue somewhere, but nothing, uh, so I'll give those to you. It's just some typing stuff. But I did have a question on page twelve. Under theft, burglary and vandalism. It says if staff member reports personal belongings have been stolen or vandalized. I understand that, but what if the, what if the pageant reports?
We can have that in there, it's got four pages.
Yeah, if they had something stolen or vandalized or whatever, that's just the only thing yet.
And I asked Manny when we were reviewing this, I mean, a lot of these recommendations came from the committee and from corporal rank, corporal rank bills, uh, recommendations. I don't want to think it's tied to ranking correctly. Um, which is great. Uh, that, and so I wanted to let you guys know that's been incorporated in here.
I thought the changes were good.
I had a couple of questions. Uh, page one. Is there a training on, last paragraph? And who does, who does the report?
Page one.
The last paragraph?
Yes. It says the ability, explains, it makes sense that when the, when the emergency is passed, that an incident report should be completed and distributed to an executive committee. Who does that?
So we do have, let me just read this. We do have incident reports that are filed up by, filed by staff and they are given to risk management. Uh, we've never had to file an incident report using an AED machine, but we have done it for a first aid kit and that goes straight to risk management.
So who does that?
It would be the staff member involved. So if it was on Saturday and someone slipped down and bruised their knee and needed band-aid or something, um, the incident report would be completed by the staff member and that goes directly to risk management.
And so your question was, is staff trained on completing that report?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, they are, yeah. So every year we have a member, we just had someone from risk management stop at our admin planning meeting uh to go over the uh, the uh, set of rules or instructions when it comes to uh completing an incident report.
Okay, that page three, uh, the emergency equipment. It says environment managers staff personally should inspect every, every six months. Is there a form for, for them to fill it out?
No, there isn't a form.
How do you know it's done every six months?
We could do a form and they could date it, so we could do that. Okay, we can do a form and they could date it, so we could do that.
Anyone else have, have anything? So we're not voting on this today, um, hopefully we'll next month. If you find anything else to, or to Summer. Thanks for all the corrections on that and updates. Okay, um, wait, our next items are a few items to discuss on, uh, on closures of the library. So there's been a request to close the library on November twenty-second for the staff development day. Um, so that will be ha, closing for the entire day. Um, so we do need a motion for that.
That's a Friday, correct?
That's a Friday, yes.
And then staff will remain, or the training have occurred here primarily, so there might be some off-site, uh, for different departments.
In the afternoon, the managers, they do their own little workshops and we've had managers in the past go to various libraries or, uh, adult services. Last year we went and visited with Greg McClain and he showed them the archives over there, so. But in the morning, it's gonna be a workshop, four workshops with the entire staff, including corporal break bill will be coming back to speak on, um, terrorist phone calls and swatting. Uh, we'll also have John from Visual Voice, he will be here. We also have Tammy Bolt from the partnership speaking about long-range event planning and how to do it, uh, effectively. And then we also have Ashley Plotno from, uh, Newco coming as well.
Make that motion. Close the library that way.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. The discussion, okay, all in favor? Opposed? Right, and then again, a reminder, that's the one where we will pay it as a board, um. Just encourage you to hold it on your calendar and come say hi. It should really go up the day. Okay, we also have another request to move our, our, um, upcoming trustee. Uh, to be, we need a, we need a, we're gonna ask for a motion to move the November meeting to. So we have a motion, um, we have, we would like to request through the September board meeting to either September tenth or the twenty-fourth. I said no on the tenth, so.
I think twenty-fourth is better for, for me.
I will not be here on the twenty-fourth. That's okay.
Okay. Uh.
I mean, I could miss, I could miss the commission meeting.
There's a conflict with the.
Will we need your vote?
The friends of the library, yeah, the friends of the library meet on the twenty-fourth, yeah.
But that, that meeting is at four o'clock, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay. It.
We're generally done by four.
Um, so if we can get a motion to the board, because I like the tenth is unavailable.
I'll make that motion that we move the meeting to September twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
I'll second since I, since I'm a second person, then twenty-fourth is better.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so Summer, next meeting will be the twenty-fourth, um, if you don't mind updating everything. And we also would like, we need to make a request to move the November, uh, trustee meeting from the nineteenth to the twelfth.
On the nineteenth is the annual level five director summit and national.
And the September one, I was, I forgot to say that. Okay, so do we have a motion to move the board meeting? How does, how does the twelfth look for everybody? Well, I, we did not, we did not plan properly.
That's okay, I mean, we can all, can surely make without me and just.
I mean, because if, if it's not, if we don't do, do the twelfth and we're, we're, we're running up, up against Thanksgiving, so.
So with symbolism.
No, I can't, because I should say five. So even the meeting at five would not help because I'm, I'm at the courthouse from five o'clock to. On that day, yeah. So you all go ahead.
Okay, the fifth is election day is the problem.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right. No, I mean, you all go ahead and do it on the twelfth and I'll, I'll just, I mean, I can, I've not missed a minute. It's not like I'm always three in a row.
Okay, so if we could get a motion to move the September, or the November meeting to November twelfth. Thank you, thank you. Okay, any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Nope, we have some discussion.
I may be coming back from trip, so. Coming November twelfth.
We are.
Just now looking at, because eleventh is better.
Don't come back with like a tan and.
Think my tires should work today. Uh, and so I might be back, depends on what we label it, five hundred mile drive, so.
I think getting into November, it's gonna get hairy for a lot of folks and with fall break, if, if we, uh, if we run into any other board members being out, if we could just communicate that, it's much easier for, um.
I'll, I'll send the email to somebody.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move the November meeting to November twelfth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries for November twelfth, Summer. Okay, and then our final, um, item, uh, on the, under new business is, uh, a request to be fine-free, um, during the book drop construction. Um, this, this request, um, has been researched heavily by staff from other, um, libraries that have, uh, been through this, a similar situation. So what, what Manny and staff has asked is if we could be fine-free two weeks prior to construction to communicate with the community that this is going to happen. And then two weeks after construction completes. And again, we're looking at three months, give or take, for construction. Uh, I, I think that, you know, there was some discussion on, uh, different ideas of, of, uh, of dealing with fines and books, the book drop. And I think this is the best solution, uh, for it and so if we can have a motion, um, for fine-free, uh, during two weeks prior to construction, during two weeks after.
The only thing that I would, would just, I could ponder more than anything else is, since we don't know specifically when that's going to be, do we want to table that right now until we know for sure when, when that, that might be? Because I think, I think if you've just got something that's just sort of nebulous like, like this, I, I think we want to, to make sure that we get that communicated to everybody.
And I think that that, that's fair and can work out with the timing of our next board meeting, uh, if September twenty-fourth, because.
Commission will.
Commission, well, yeah, so it, it, that works out with timing, uh, but, you know, let's take into consideration, um, for the next board meeting to, to vote for that, so. Okay, um, and then if, if you take a look at the bottom of your agenda on important dates, um, of course, our next board meeting just changed. But also take a look at, you know, some of the cool things that are happening and really encourage you to come in and, um, check out what's going on in the library. So that's all we have for today. We can get a motion to adjourn, yeah.
It's, well, I'm going on Thursday. I think Ajay went Monday. I mean, we're seeing traffic there. Seen a lot of patrons return their books, book return and, uh, bring them with, with us. So, I mean, there's been some things we've, we've been working out technical things, but.
Is it a successful thing to keep looking forward to another one somewhere else or not?
I think if we're able to even have a single patron receive their books there, I think it's a success. So yes, I do, I, I think in the future we should explore town, because I know that's one that we would like to see here, so. And we won't fall into the. The IT will be much easier in town than versus Louisville, yeah.
Manny, um, and ma- maybe to Andy's point, at one year end, we could get a report on usage and, um, and, and saying, but, you know, and then I think, I think the town hall would love that too. Probably in commission and fiber, the university library too, that'd be great.
Robert's actually working on that now for his, uh, grant, so, yeah.
And just one, one last question is I think, since we didn't meet in July, um. Am I remembering correctly that we had to, I guess, trespass or, um, keep somebody else from coming back on to the.
We had a few that we've had to, uh, Mariville PD issued, um, no trespass for a few individuals.
And that's, does that, is that anything recent on that or is it something that may have kind of calmed itself down?
It happens in spurts, it really does. It'll be a week where everything happens. And then it's, right now, it's very, um, right now, but it seems like it's in a spurt or it was in, within one week, like a three. Uh, it's now.
Has it, anything happened on the safety committee as far as the signing that was requested, county?
There's been nothing, no movement on the safety committee.
Well, some of the recommendations are put into the safety plan, uh. But.
Signing that we asked for, nothing.
I, no, no, we're, we're still waiting for the, uh, twelve-foot.
Hole.
Hole or whatever, pipe that's, to get removed.
You can circle back.
That's right.
Alright, now.
Yeah.
Alright, then a second, give a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you guys.